Jonathan Live na ba tayo, bre?
Ayan, live na, live na tayo, siyempre. Ayan, good evening, good evening.
Ikaw muna, bre, 'yung trademark mo.
Ayan, magandang, magandang, magandang gabi po sa inyong lahat. Live na live po ang Kuya Noel and Tito Aldus Show dito sa Winnipeg.
Magandang gabi po, magandang gabi Winnipeg, magandang gabi Manitoba, magandang gabi Canada.
Ayun.
Welcome sa Kuya Noel and Tito Aldus Show. Masarap ang tiya.
Ayun.
Kapag barley ang iniinom.
Mm-hmm.
Kapag ang tubig ay Candjen Water.
Ayun, parang tatlong baga 'yan ah, Kuya Noel.
Ay.
Si Candjen, si Amazing Barley.
Si, si Tulpo, Brad.
Ah, si.
Ay, endorser.
Endorser ng ating barley products na.
Endorser ng barley, si Rapi Tulpo.
Rapi Tulpo, si idol, Rapi Tulpo.
Oh, Manny Pacquiao.
Ah Manny Pacquiao.
May Candjen machine 'yan.
Ay, si Manny Pacquiao, oh.
Oo, kasi ito hindi sa pag ano, athlete 'yan eh.
Mm-hmm.
Inapakahalaga ng alkaline water sa katawan ng tao, lalo na pagka 'yung athlete ka. Matagal nang iuse ng Candjen Water si Manny Pacquiao. At the same time, nagba-barley si Manny Pacquiao.
Yun.
Ay, magandang gabi sa inyo ay sinisimulan natin sa tiya, sa, sa tubig. Dahil maganda pag usapan natin ngayon.
Tubig.
Tubig at kung ano-ano pa.
Yes.
Sinatubig 'yung ano Board of Trustees. Tinubig.
Bakit natubig na baha?
Propose Bill Number Sixty Four.
Yes, sir.
Correctment of Number Sixty Four.
Mm-hmm.
And po ay mag-aabolish. It will eliminate all school board trustees in Manitoba. Ah, matatanggal, at sabi ng ah gobyerno, they will be able to save forty million dollars a year.
Forty million dollars?
Kapag nawala na tong school board trustee, bakit ka mo? Kasi maraming gastusin 'yan eh. Alam niyo ba? Ang itong mga school board trustee na'to, ito mga sumusweldito ng at least twenty thousand plus a year.
A year.
Di talakihan ha? However, ang ginagawa lang, hindi naman sinasabi ko na lang, di ko minamaliit, no? Nagkokonvento one sa month na council.
Mm-hmm.
Supposedly gumagawa na ng mga polisiya para sa education. Ngayon, ang tanong ko, Tito Aldus, kilala ba school board, Board of Trustee mo?
Kuya Noel, sandali, ayan, ga ahead pa. May tanong ka?
Ang tanong ko sa iyo, kilala mo ba ang Board of Trustee mo, school, school trustee?
Hindi nga eh. Tagal-tagal ko na dito sa mani, sa Winnipeg. Ngayon lang talaga ako naging aware kung may Board of Trustees, hindi ko pa nga alam anong job, job description nila.
Oo, alam nun, few months ago, nung nagsisimula pa lang tayo dito, no? Sinabi natin 'yan sa audience natin eh. We would like you to be educated, to be informed, and to engage in what's happening sa ating city, sa Winnipeg. At tinalaki na, pinahapya pa nga natin dun. Sinabi natin, alam niyo ba ginagawa ng konsihal niyo? Alam mo ba ginagawa ng mayor niyo? Alam niyo ba na may school trustee?
Talintikan pa.
Diba? Una, una, talinit yata tayo ni Pallister. Kaya ngayon, ginawa, sisiba ko na, Brad.
Talintikan, si Board of Trustee.
Maraming tumututol, pero ako personally, hindi ko kasi nararam, sorry ah. 'Yung aking pagkaka-interview kay Councilor Sherry Rollins, kasi dati siyang school trustee.
Mm-hmm.
At chairperson pa siya ng pinakamalaking school division dito sa Manitoba, ang Winnipeg School Division. Sakop niya na sa inyo, sakop niya na sa amin, ang downtown, et cetera, malaki 'yan.
Yeah.
At dito, ang dahil mga Pilipino dito. However, nakakas, nakakalungkot isipin na alam ko magaling si Councilor Sherry Rollins. No question about that, about her performance. Kaya lang, nung sa structure ng Winnipeg, ng, ng school trustee, ako talagang personally, hindi ako niniwala.
Bakit, Kuya Noel?
Duplication to eh, duplication to ng, halimbawa ikaw, naging ano ka, naging ama ka nung nasa elementary pa 'yung, ibig sabihin, parent ka nung mga, nung mga, ang mga bata eh nasa elementary pa.
Elementary, oo.
Kapag may problema si Aliana at 'yung may ibang mga anak mo, tatawag ka ba ng trustee?
Hindi.
Ah, sino una tatawag mo? 'Yung teacher, diba?
Teacher, yes.
Oo, yun ang argument ni Pallister. Ako, sinabi ko na, ito, halataan naman na hindi tayo maayon sa lahat ng inyong, ng polisiya ni Pallister eh.
Mm-hmm.
Pero dito sa argumento niyan na'to, ang argumento niyan na'to, 'yung necessity of the school trustee to the parents, what is the, ano ang need? Ano ang relationship? Magkakilala ba o alam ba mismo ng parent na may school trustee?
Yun ang tanong, Kuya Noel eh. Hindi nga, alam ko may school, ano ba talagang function ng school trustee?
Ah.
We're, we're calling any, 'yung ano, 'yung mga audience ngayon, kung sino diyan may school trustee right now?
Oo, may mga ni school, school trustee ba, che, che, mga school trustee, nag, mga Pilipino, Anthony Ramos, tumakbo konsihal. Darlin Bautista.
Mm-hmm.
Diba?
Yeah.
Ah, si sa Seven Oaks, si Aling Cory, diba? Maraming involvement niya, si Tony, si Tito Tony, ah, um, Ambansak Alikabok, diba? Dating school trustee 'yan. Ngayon, kung nanonood sila, may kamag-anak sila na, na mga nakakamag-anak na, naalam ang ginawa ng kanila mga kamag-anak na naging school trustee, ipaluanin sa amin, ano ang, ang school trustee at ano ang iniambag ng school trustee sa atin?
Mm-hmm.
Diba? Pero maraming, ang mga politiko kasi, gan'to 'yan eh. Ang school trustee para sa akin, ginagawang internship 'yan ng mga politiko. Bakit ka mo?
Bakit, yeah.
Oh, based on the experience na lang eh, sa track record na lang. Greg Selinger, dati na ating premier.
Uh-huh.
Sa nagsimula.
School trustee?
School trustee.
Uh-huh.
Oh, 'yung mga current ngayon, 'yung mga konsihal ngayon, si Brian Mace, si Sherry, si Sherry Rollins, 'yung nainterview natin. At marami pang iba, apat 'yan eh. Si Cindy Gilro, nainterview na rin natin sa WSD, school trustee 'yan. O, tapos konsihal na ngayon, ano next step? MLA ba, MP ba? So, hindi ko sinasabing masama na gawin, na may step by step. Kaya lang, eh, parang ginagawang internship o stepping stone na pagiging trustee para timplahin, test the waters if you will be successful as a politician. Tama ba o mali 'yun? I don't know, it's up to you guys to, to ano, to, to judge that. Pero sa akin, sinasabi ko lang 'yung realidad na nangyayari talaga. Because the, the former premier himself, na si Greg Selinger, ay nanggaling, nagmula sa pagiging school trustee. O, ano ibig sabihin nun? Gusto ka maging politiko o magtrustee ka muna?
Yeah, parang sagunin kabataan.
Ah, mag sagunin kabataan ka muna para maano mo. Ito, once, once a month lang naman ang ginagawa nito eh.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, diba? Pagka alam mo na 'yung timplada ng ano, ng mga, ng mga, mga strategy bilang isang politikong school trustee, well actually, it's not supposed to be a political, political position. Kasi ano 'yan, civic 'yan eh. Ang, ang civic politics is non-political. Ibig sabihin, walang mga partido. Nagiging political lang ang, 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 ang eleksyon kapagka provincial level dahil nandyan na 'yung mga, ah, nandyan na NDP, nandyan progressive conservative, nandyan liberal. May partido na 'yan. Pero pagka-konsihal at school trustee, dapat 'yan supposedly walang political affiliation ang dapat ng mga tumatakbo. However, 'yung ba ang totoo, hindi naman eh.
Hindi.
May mga lining kayo.
Mm-hmm.
Diba? Kaliwa kayo, kanang kayo, middle kayo, liberal kayo, progressive conservative kayo, may mga lineage kayo. May mga, meron kayo 'yung mga partido talaga na, na, ah, even membership. You, marami diyan mga school trustee, member ng NDP, ng conservative, et cetera, kasi 'yung partido mismo nagdidikta, ito may potential ka Aldus.
Mm-hmm.
Ito may potential ka na maging MLA in the future. You, igugroom kita, diba? Ito, ito ako, political party leader ako ng provincial o ng federal, igugroom kita hangga't bata ka. Saan ko magsisimula? School trustee. Eh, nagagam, buti na lang, tinanggal na.
Ayan eh, tama ka diyan, Kuya Noel. Nag, amig, in the college namin kayo magreact dito sa Facebook, ano? Sabi ni ate Malu Hoswe. According po sa WSD website, Winnipeg School Division website, the prime responsibility is to function as a board to set policy regarding the provisions of educational services. Tanong ko naman kay ate Malu, ano pa 'yung mga educational services na ini-implement o inaano ng school trustee? Ati Malu, ayun.
Actually, si ate Malu is a teacher 'yan. Ah, alam ko teacher 'yan sa, or meron siya, or, I don't know if she is part of Winnipeg School Division, pero kilala po natin isa sa mga leaders ng, ng eskwelahan dito sa, sa Winnipeg School Division. Kaya, lumalabo 'yung ano ko eh, 'yung, galaw, siguro ako nang galawan, no?
Daha, daha lang.
Oo, ay, nag-iinit ako kasi pagka 'yung ginagamit kasi ang posisyon sa hindi tama, nakakayamot 'yun, kasi alam niyo ba? Nakakatanggap tayo ng property tax assessment every year. Property tax, binabayad natin 'yun sa city, diba? Yun 'yung, dahil nag-aari tayo ng lupa ng, ng property. Pagka umuupat tayo, wala tayo nung binabayaran. Bukod dun, may second page 'yun. Ano 'yung second page? School tax.
School tax, yun.
Oo, yun ang binabayad natin dun sa ano, sa eskwelahan, 'yung binabayad natin kasama do sweldo ng school trustee.
Yes.
O, may, nagkakaroon ba ng duplication? Hindi natin alam. Na, na, nakapag-reach out na ba kayo sa school trustee? Ano ko sa inyo, sa mga nanonood, have you ever reached out to your school trustee or do you even know your school trustee? Yun ang tanong ko. Ma, ma, makikilala mo lang 'yan panahon ng eleksyon, October ng ano, ng eleksyon, full eleksyon.
Makaway-kaway sila.
Unkain magpakaaano dito, magpakaa, eh, kilala ko 'yung mga ano, mga school trustee na 'yan, no, no offense, diba? Sa, sa kanila dahil gusto nilang tumakbo na. Kaya lang, ang katotohanan, ito ang masakit na katotohanan eh.
Hmm.
Nakikita lang naming kayo at nakikilala lang naming kayo pagka-eleksyon.
Ako?
Ah, pagbangling ng ano.
Sabi po ni ate Malu Hoswe, hmm, kuya, hindi po, teacher.
Ah, teacher.
Ah, teacher po siya.
Ah, teacher si Teacher Malu, sorry, sorry. Pero yun, pero yun, tama ba, salamat dun sa information na binigay ni, ni Teacher Malu. However, ako, kasi, kasi ganun eh, yun, yun, yun 'yung sentiment ko na, nung mabasa, nung nagkaroon ng press release ang gobyerno about the elimination of school trustee. Abay, sabi ko, tinatalakin na namin 'yung Tito Aldus bago niyung ano eh, nanood yata kayo, ginahin niya yata 'yung ano eh. Well, at least, diba?
Yeah.
At least, narinig tayo, kunarinig man tayo.
Hinig, no?
Pero may consultation 'yan daw, di uma, na nagginawa ang Pallister government before they proposed this ano, this bill. Pero maraming umaalma dahil marami ding, marami kasing mga, mga, mga school trustee na affiliated sa mga political parties. Diba? Yun lang 'yun eh.
Eh, konting, ano 'yun, politics na involved 'yan, Kuya Noel.
May political na involved 'yan, kasi pagka, kasi ano eh, nagugroom ka na ng bata mo eh.
Yeah.
Pagka, pagkawala ka ng ano, wala ka ng inters, internship na, 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 napwesto na, na ginagamit mo para makapagbuo na mga leader, nakapag-ready, bak, prepare na mga leader in the future.
Mm-hmm.
Eh, 'yung political cloud mo maapektuhan.
Totoo ka diyan.
Diba? Wala ka, at saan mo igugroom ngayon? Sa civic, sa si, sa si, sa city level? Eh, mahirap po, at takbo ka na ganun ang konsihal, diba? Eh, at least yun, maluwag-luwag 'yun eh, dahil school trustee, paningit, paningit, diba? O, kita mo nga, ito, hindi sa pag ano, Pilipino, si Anthony Ramos, o dating ano 'yan, dating school trustee.
Uh-huh.
O, lumaban kay may paktakan na konsihal ng Point Douglas.
Ah.
O, and, hindi pinalad. Diba? O, ang lineage niyan, NDP. Ganun lang yun. Hindi ko, hindi ako'y naano, or, kaibigan natin si Wab Kinu, kaibigan natin si Cindy Lamoros, si Kevin, wala nga tayong political affiliation, kaya masarap eh. Masarap ba na atal lahat ng mga political party? Diba?
Mm-hmm.
Eh, 'yung katotohanan sinasabi natin, hindi tayo conservative, hindi tayo NDP, hindi tayo liberal, 'yung katotohanan sinasabi natin, ginagamit niyo ang pag, ang pagiging school trustee sa political, ano yun, political ambition ng partido niyo. Period, thank you.
Ayun.
Nag-init ang ulo ko. Kadyan ka muna, saka mag barley, Kuya Noel. Candjen water ka muna.
Ah.
Eh, ito, papalabas po namin sa inyo 'yung ano, 'yung interview nating ki Sherry Collins.
Sherry.
Pakinggan niyo, dahil mamayit naman 'to, ang, ang, ito, ang lining niya, NDP. Ah, dati siyang school trustee at chairman po siya ng chairperson ng Winnipeg School Division. At maganda na may sinabi niya, at nirerespeto natin, although wala tayong, sabi nga, hindi tayo pumapali kahit na anong partido. However, nirerespeto natin ang kahit anong partido. Yun lang yun. Ito po, panaorin po natin ang ating panayam bago mag-init ang ulo.
Pumapalakpak si ate Malu Hoswe.
O, magaling din 'yung si, ano, si Teacher Malu sa mga, ganyang mga, ano 'yan eh, ah, may, may interview 'yan nung isang linggo sa, sa isang broadcast na ganito, at in-interview 'yung participation ng mga women leaders on the education sector. At least po si Teacher Malu na, ah, in-interview diyan. Ito po, pakinggan na po natin 'yung ating panayam kay Sherry Collins. Ayan na.
Hearing from City Councilor Sherry Rollins of Fortridge East for Gary Ward, who is a former chairperson for, if I'm not mistaken, for the largest and oldest school division school board in Manitoba, the Winnipeg School Division, and we will hear her comments on the plan of the Pallister government to dissolve its thirty-seven English school boards into one central body. Counselor, uh, what is your overall take on this as a former school board trust?
Uh, well, as a former school board trustee, I can't believe that I'm in the position to say that I might be if this legislation passes one of the last intact boards of the Winnipeg School Division, because of course currently they're missing two school trustees. So, I think I presided over the last intact board as the chair of the oldest and largest school division. The education review, you know, look, I was never scared of amalgamation because of course being the oldest and the largest with thirty thousand, over thirty-three thousand students when I was there, twenty percent of Manitoba student population within the Winnipeg School Division. I was, every school division was smaller than us by a lot. So, I was never afraid of amalgamation, but what I was afraid of was this tone-deaf monolith of an, an alternative, an educational board. And, and I'm afraid that that's what they may have created, right? It's shapeless. It might be tone-deaf to the needs of the community, and, and that's what I was afraid of. Uh, and, and, and so, you know, let's start there maybe.
Okay, so, um, can you be more specific on what are you afraid of?
Sure. Yeah, so, in, when I was chair of the Winnipeg School Division, we introduced more bilingual programming than ever before. My priority was Cree and Ajibway. Uh, we introduced additional French language, French immersion programming. We already had Ukrainian bilingual programming. We always thought that the Filipino community would walk right through our door and ask for a bilingual Tagalog program. Uh, but we also introduced Spanish language program. And this is the type of individualized catered approach that a school division can take. In addition to, in the Winnipeg School Division, we really had an equity-based formula so that those children living in poverty got a helping hand each and every day at, you know, within the school division. So, that poverty is the highest indicator of whether or not you're gonna be successful, right? In school or not successful in school. And that's another thing that I'm afraid this plan just doesn't address, is, is poverty as an indicator of school success. It's a little-known fact, everyone says, well, Winnipeg stats, our PISA scores are bad. Uh, the reality is if you remove, uh, all of the students that are poor from that, our, our scores are just as high as any other province, any other jurisdiction. And so I think, you know, what really was needed here was a cash injection to make equal uh, the poorer students in Winnipeg and across Manitoba. And unfortunately, this, there, you know, that you can't even find a paragraph in this review with respect to that.
Okay, so, um, I read your biography on your website. Like you ma'am, I'm also a parent of three kids. Yeah, my, my oldest one studied at Stanley Knowles and moved to Sisler High School after Stanley. And still have two young, young ones who are currently at Tyndale Park School.
Tyndale Park.
I, I'm within your catchment. Within the school division now.
You are, as a matter of fact, I wrote a book called Tyndale Park Tia. For the kids at Tyndale Park who I got to read to, and, and Sisler has the most uh, entries into Van Hooper Film School, uh, and is an amazing enrichment school, Sisler.
Yeah, now, i- in my experience ma'am, uh, as a parent, uh, I have, I'm sorry, I have not interacted at all whether in person, by phone, or email uh, with any school board trustee in relation to my kids' educational needs or any school-related matter. So, maybe it was because of my ignorance of the existence of the book. Uh, I know there, there is a, a board, but I don't really know what, what's the purpose of having a school board. You know, being, you know, having two jobs and being so busy. I, it, it's on me, it's, it was my fault not to know that. In addition to this, I, I read the, an art, uh, a news release yesterday by the premier who argued that the, about the necessity of trustees for parents in schools. And he said, if, and I quote, if you ask parents, uh, they will tell you they don't go to school trustees and superintendents when they have a problem with their child. They go straight to the teacher, which I do. And that teacher is the level of accountability that they expect to get. Counselor, please enlighten me or our viewers um, on the importance of having the board, school, school trustees. Uh, uh, their importance to the parents, to the school, and to the whole system maybe, to the whole, uh, educational system.
That's a really good question. And as the education review was released, including, um, many of its supporters, right, that were looking for change and expressed the same sentiment, you know what I was thinking of? I was thinking of the Tory staffer that phoned me one night. And, you know, I, I wanna keep confidences, but essentially their, their family was in crisis and they had heard I was the quote-unquote good trustee. And their child was in crisis in a junior high school in the city. And they needed immediate help. They said, Council Rollins, uh, we have been on the phone with suicide hotline, uh, the last two nights, and tonight we're calling you. You, you know, I'll tell you, I almost immediately called nine-one-one, right? And I said, is everyone safe in the home? To make a long story short, yes, you're right, the great majority of parents may never have had an interaction other than a school trustee knocking on their door to get the election vote, right? But for those calls that I had of families in crisis, families out of the city who, you know, were part of the LGBTQ+ community and wanted to know, Council Rollins, what is the safe place? Where's the safe place I put my child? And providing them assurances that they won't be the only gay parent in a school. Students that are in crisis, students with special needs, parents with children living with autism. These are the parents that I spent a great deal of time with. Uh, needing to access programming, including, you know, members of the Conservative Party who probably are supporting this review. Uh, parents with children with mobility needs, needing access to or, or a conversation, dispute resolution between the system of education, the school board, and this local school to get additional parking, for instance. It, you know, you don't know, I think, and, and the story hasn't been well communicated, what my day-to-day, what my evening work, like you, I had two jobs, and what my evening work looked like. And, and, you know, I'm here to tell you that it, it oftentimes did, I was a voice on the other end of the phone line that could do the system navigation that was sometimes desperately, um, life safety risk so needed. And, and, and I think for the school trustees in particular, school trustees like Jennifer Chen, Betty Adele, who are some of the first indigenous and Asian school trustees in the Winnipeg School Division. There hasn't been that many, right? I was the first indigenous chair of the Winnipeg School Division, actually second uh, indigenous chair of the Winnipeg School Division. And, you know, Betty Adele is now the third. This is, these trustees represent open doors to community. There is no question, we would not have a Cree and Ajibway program if it weren't for community intervention into the Winnipeg School Division. Same thing with Ukrainian bilingual, same thing with Spanish, the Spanish parent advocates. That was direct to trusteeship. And, and so I think it's, it's really critical that we recognize that because in, in systems generally, they're not built for all people, all families. Um, but with, with special needs and the investments that we made into autism and anxiety programming, for instance, you would not have seen that if it weren't for an activist board and that municipal local politician making very important education-related choices. So, like, I, I really thank you for the question because I, I was listening to that thinking, I don't know, you know, if that story's been told about how many evening calls I got and how, how difficult they were. And, and some of these same families, nutrition programs in schools, breakfast programs they'd ask you for because children were hungry. I don't think, I don't think that story is told often enough, the, the deeply personal calls that trustees handle. Not all trustees, I wanna acknowledge that, right? Not all trustees.
Putulin natin saglit dun, Tito Aldus 'yung ating, um, um, interview. No? Um, um, binention niya rin, uh, 'yung importante, so, tinanong natin siya, what is the importance of, uh, actually having uh, a school trustee?
Mm-hmm.
At nag-site siya ng example na, uh, may mga tumatawag sa kanya, particularly isang Tory staffer pa nga. Ang Tory staffer, ibig sabihin, progressive conservative, uh, staff, na tumawag sa kanya, na may problema sa pamilya po. Which I appreciate. Kaya lang hindi lahat ng school trustee, not all school trustees are like Councilor Sherry Rollins. Eh, ang problema nga, hindi natin kilala kung sino ang, ang, ang trustee natin ngayon eh.
Yung alam, sino tatawagan mo pa eh.
Oo, halimbawa, may problema kang ganun sa eskwelahan. Would you ever think of calling your school trustee?
No. Not in a chance, what's that?
Yeah, not in a chance. You will call your teacher.
Yeah.
Cause that is directly, ano, it, it 'yung direktang ano eh, they, uh, they, they deal with your kids directly. So that if you have any issues at school or your kids has any struggles or challenges at school, you will not call the school trustee. You will call the teacher. And after that, if you would like to elevate, which seldom happens, in, in my case, you will call the principal or the assistant principal. But the first step to call, the first person to call for any educational issue, school issue, is not the school trustee, I'm sorry. I really appreciated my interview with the, uh, Councilor, uh, Sherry Rollins. But in, in that regard, yeah, I, I fully understood it. I, and I appreciated it the way she acted upon those calls. But not everyone, not all school trustees do those. And, and, number one, I will go back to the, to the, to the, to my original argument. We don't even know who are the school trustees.
Um, let's say, let's say Kuya Noel, let's say, even we are aware who are our school trustee is.
Kilala man natin sila, oh.
Let's say, on the other side of the coin.
Hmm.
If we call the school trustee first, it will create a lot of complications.
Hmm.
Number one, complications on the school, on the teacher, on the principal.
Ama.
Why are you bypassing us?
Exactly.
It is an in-house problem or it is an in-house, we can solve this one's in-house solution for that.
In the classroom.
Why are you calling a third party?
Uh, yeah, they may not be a third party, pero the point of you are targeting protocol, 'yung proper, proper protocol. Kasi, magagal, the cheat, 'yung teacher diyan, magagalit sa'yo kung if, if that is a school-related or classroom-related issue, why would you address the school trustee on that?
By the way.
If you can solve it inside the classroom.
Mm-hmm.
What would be the participation if, ang mangyayari niyan, complication, sinabi mo, na-target po 'yun eh. That would resolve a complication among the, the system. Because the, the school trust, the, the teacher would, would go back to you. Why didn't you address this issue to us? Why didn't you tell us? We can solve it right here and there without calling the school trustee.
And she'll, she'll take it personally, for sure.
Oo, tapos makapag-inikabay anak mo. Papagsak, hindi, hindi rohan. Hindi, tama mo, tama 'yung argue, 'yung analogy mo, Tito Aldus, na if we can solve it here in this level, teacher and parent level, let's do it. Why bother calling the school trustee?
We go back to your main premise, Kuya Noel. Do we know? Alam ba natin kung sino school trustee natin? Number two. Number two. Alam ba natin kung ano 'yung trabaho talaga ng school trustee?
Ang sinabi mo, tumatawag ka, ano ba 'yung, ay, nagkamali. You, you, ano, actually, that, that is not my, ano, my scope of work. Because we don't even know what to ask the school trustee. Because we don't know what they do. Number one, we don't know them. Number two, we don't know what they do. So what do we ask from them? Nothing, right? Eto teacher, alam natin, they are teaching our kids. If there are problems inside the classroom, we will call the teacher and we will address this issue to the teacher directly.
Yes, it is.
Bullying man yan, kung ano man yan. Ang magkakaroon niya, ito, balik tayo dun sa plano ng gobyerno. I don't know if this model will be effective though. Kasi magkakaroon ng isang malaking council. Tapos, ang sabi nila, mas maganda raw 'yung magiging, uh, there will be more participation from the parents because the parents will, there will be volunteers on the school level, on the community level. Alambawa, ako, teacher, uh, parent ako for Franco and Francis, I can volunteer myself. Now, the challenge there is the time of the parents.
Yeah.
Lalo na 'yung mga Pilipino.
Yeah.
At pagtumpu ang trabaho niyan eh. How can they volunteer their time? That's another problem, diba? Yon naman ang isang argument nung mga umuopost ito sa, this is one of the arguments for those people who, uh, who don't want this bill to happen. The volunteer, uh, the time of the parents to volunteer. And who would volunteer nowadays? I don't know. I, I, I can, I can, you know. Hindi ako makapag-commit ma, ma, I cannot commit my time to volunteer, but I love to. I am more than willing to help the, the system. However, I cannot, ano, hindi mo ako mapupwersa na naiilaan 'yung oras ko because I don't have that time. And many of us are like me. Diba? Tatlong apat na nga trabaho natin nun, diba? Why bother? However, kung talagang may mga tao, however, if there are parents who really like to, to volunteer, then, then that's good. Diba? Eh, dito nga sa Tyndale, nawala na 'yung parents' teachers eh.
Volunteer lahat yan.
Kasi walang volunteer, brad. Di mo ng problema. Eh, eh, masaki, masali mo utong pag-usapan. There are no parent teachers here in, in, at Tyndale Park. And I would like to appreciate that the volunteers before, namely Crystal, shout out to Crystal, and the other leader, and the other parents, who did very well. However, namapago din 'yung mga to. They are also, they have, they also have some commitments for their families, for their work, and they cannot volunteer all their lives. Diba? They cannot commit all their time, all the time duh, duh, sa eskwelahan, sa, uh, for the schools. So, that's another challenge. Who will volunteer? Kawalan na 'yung school trustee. However, babalik na naman tayo. Kung may volunteer o wala, kung may school trustee o wala, nararamdaman ba natin na nawala o meron ng school trustee, hindi naman eh.
Hindi, wala ka wala na eh.
Oo, ang pagka, ako, ang problema, pagkaano wala teacher?
Ayun.
Diba? Teacher, mga heroes natin 'yan eh. Shout out to all the teachers. If the teachers are affected by this, then that's the time that I will say, "Palister, you're wrong." That policy is absolutely wrong. Diba? However, the plan is, these forty million savings will go towards redirected to act, to act, adding more educational assistance. Maybe adding more teachers, as what they promised. I don't know how true. Adding more resources to the classrooms, which will benefit who? The students. Eh, hindi tayo spoke sa mani Palister, pero at this, sinasabi lang natin 'yung what we feel and what we, you know, uh, 'yung ano, 'yung naobserve, what we observe and what we experience as a parent.
Yes, bro. Ay, naku, kandyan ka muna, kandyan ka muna. Kandyan, 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 kandyan muna.
So, maganda 'yung usapan po nating eh, we would like to, uh, if you, if you are, uh, listening right now or watching this video right now, you can share this to your friends, especially our interview with Councilor Sherry Rollins. I would like to thank, although, I would like to thank, really, uh, Councilor Short, uh, Sherry Rollins for taking her time to share her views on this bill. And, um, although I really respect her opinion on this, however, we have differences, which is fine. This is democracy. But, pero importante, but the, the important thing here is we respect each other and we hear each other's op- opinion. And we are, we are all looking forward a better community, a better educational system for all of us, regardless if you're a parent, regardless if you are a teacher, if you are in the, in the educational sector. Yun lang yun.
So, yep, 'yung ating talakayin ngayon. Gusto mo ba talakayin pa 'yung ano, Kuya Tito Aldus, 'yung Aurora Borealis or next time?
Ikaw, saglit lang, one, two minutes lang, kung ano 'yung mga magandang may papay natin sa mga nagahant ng Aurora Borealis, kasi uso, uso ngayon eh.
So, almo na tayo, isang, ang isang subject matter po nating gabi, 'yung, uh, usong-uso. Gabi-gabi halos siya, meron tayong mga, ano eh, mga picture ng Aurora Borealis Northern Lights. 'Yung mga nagahant. Ay, alam po, meron panawagan ng RCMP. RCMP, uh, would like to, ano, um, um, make us aware na 'yung, uh, uh, in terms of safety when chasing those wonderful nature, ano, 'yung phenomenon, diba? Dapat magiingat tayo, kasi nasa highway 'yan, tapos gabi or late night or late or early morning na madilim pa. So, meron po na, we were able to interview, uh, the Media Relations Officer of RCMP, si Sergeant Paul Maneg, uh, who talked about, we talked about the safety when doing, um, or chasing Aurora Borealis or Northern Lights along the highways, of course. So, if you want, we can, uh, play that video and after that, we can, uh, talk about it a little bit more.
Ah, Kuya Noel, habang mainit ang issue, one moment. Uh, according to Malu Hoswe, kung may mga nagvo-volunteer man po, sino naman po ang demographics naire? Represent na mga parents na ito? Paano naman po ang boses ng mga batang? Walang representation ng mga magulang. May point siya nun.
Ganun ang point yun.
'Yung wala pong advocacy skills, 'yung may cultural, language, and socioeconomic warriors. Ganun ang point yun.
Mm-hmm, lalo na eh, mga new immigrants, diba? Kasi may language barrier dyan eh. Na hindi nila ma-express 'yung kanilang gusto para sa community dahil dun sa mga challenges na yun, na hindi nila kasalanan yun. Kasalanan bang hindi marunong mag-English, diba? So, we, we are still adjusting. However, you, you can't volunteer yourself because of that, of those challenges. How do we address that? So, that's one, the other side of the coin, na 'yung ba naa-address ba naman ng school trustee yun? In current time na nandito sila? Wala pa ako narinig.
Wala pa.
Diba? Maaring ma-address niya, ano, katulad nila teacher Maluna, isang social worker, 'yung mga community activists. Eto, dapat binibigyan natin ng pondo eh, hindi mga school trustee. Ito ah, umalik tayo na, diba? Nagpupondo tayo ng pera. We are currently, dahil mawawala na nga, or previously, we are allotting funds for the school trustees. However, dun sa mga community activists, 'yung mga, uh, mga advocates na tumutulong sa educational system natin, may nakukuha ba sila? Maybe meron, pero are those enough to support their programs, which is actually helping the communities and the educational sector? Yeah, but dapat siguro, maybe that's the point that the government should focus on, on helping these community activists and advocacy groups. Because they are really on the, nasa ano sila eh, they are in the battlefield. They know what's happening in the community because they are there. And they, ano, at alam nila, and they have the passion to help the community. Diba? Siguro mas, mas maraming funding sa kanila, ang, ang mas magandang isipin. Ganun lang yun eh, 'yung stakeholders natin dyan, kasi hindi lang 'yung, 'yung teachers, 'yung parents, 'yung mga, ngayon, may mga school trustees. May mga organizations, volunteers, and may mga sectors na tumutulong dyan, mga non-government, non-for-profit organizations. Maybe we should consider, uh, giving more funds for those non-profit organizations who are really involved in developing the communities in terms of, ano, uh, education, early childhood education, or, or, uh, elementary education, whatever it is. As long as it's within the scope of education, let, let's give them what they deserve, diba? Kung kailangan magkaroon ng grant, then we provide grant, so. Siguro, next, next week natin talakayin 'yung, ano, 'yung Aurora Borealis, kasi dito sa, sa, ano, sa school board trustee. And, uh, if Anthony Ramos, who is a former school trustee and Darlene Bautista are listening right now, or if you happen to, to watch this video on, na nakarecord na and not live, you can call us and give us, uh, your, your insight as, as former s- school board trustee in Winnipeg School Division. Especially Darlene Bautista, who is, is very active also. And, diba? And Anthony Ramos na, who sat there for many years before running for, uh, City Councilor. And also Cory, or Tita Cory of, uh, Seven Oaks School Division. If you are listening, then give us a call, give us your insight about being or about being a school trustee, or what's the purpose really of being a school trustee? And what has been your contributions?
Naku.
Diba? What has been your contribution? Yung Tito Tony, Tito Tony, nakalimutan ko, I'm sorry, 'yung active sa seniors. 'Yung mga Filipinos na nagung school trustee. Get out in the open right now. Because this, this very, ano, uh, itong, itong, uh, uh, syste-, itong structure nyo, this very structure is now being demolished, which was once part of your career as a politician, diba? Naging bahagi kayo nito eh. Ngayon, dinuduro, dudurugi na, tatanggalin na ni Palister, ano 'yung boses nyo? Pero ba kayo sinasabi, o wala kayong gustong sabihin dahil wala na kayo sa pwesto?
Or, the same thing, yun Kuya Noel, you would call the attention of Jennifer Chen, right?
Oh, Jennifer Chen.
Yeah, an existing school trustee right now. What's your reaction on this issue that Palister is abolishing?
Oh, yeah, eliminating the school trustee board, uh, school board. Hindi ko nga kilala si ano eh, nakilala ko lang siya, nung ininterview na siya sa CBC.
Yeah.
Diba? So.
Ito, palagi po dumarating sa ano, dumadalo sa Filipino events before eh. Right now, it's your time, Jen, to pick out. And what's your stand on this issue?
Yeah. Tsaka, ano eh, alimawa, ngayon lang natin, diba? Ang, the sad thing here is, uh, ngayong mga abolish na sila. Ngayon pa lang natin, uh, nakikit, uh, inaalam kung sino ba sila.
Exactly.
That's the ironic part, diba? They are now being abolished or will be abolished. And this is the only time that we will ask, who are those people to be demolished? Who are those roles to be demolished? Because we do not even know that they exist. We know that they exist, but we do not know them. And we did not feel them as part of raising our kids as parents. Magagalit na kayo kung magagalit sa akin, but I did not really feel the presence of school, any school trustee.
You know the funny part, Kuya Noel?
Oo.
You know the funny part?
Kasi iya-iya kayo ngayon, eh.
They would go to the legislative, do a protest, and some people, they would invite people, right, to join them. Actually, these people don't know what's real issue it is. On abolishing. Uh, Malu Hoswe has a very good comment, Kuya Noel. Very timely po kuya, this is a good information po sa mga magulang para malaman po nilang gaano kahalagaan ang kanilang advocacy for their children's education para ma-empower po sila. Yun, very good po, Teacher Malu.
Yeah, yeah. Eh, sana lahat ang katulad ni Teacher Malu. At sana katulad katulad na ini-Councilor Sherry Rollins. Diba? Meron isang ano eh, isang, ano dito, naging school trustee, taga Tyndale, si Dinco Silanik. Si Dinco Silanik, takbo ng takbo 'yung brad, laban ng laban as konsehal. Eh, maigbatahan. Eh, hindi manalo nalo, diba? Tumakmong school trustee. After his turn, mananalo, after his turn, tumakbo 'yung konsehal, natalo. Eh, eh, ang gusto lang nun, manalo eh.
Yeah.
I don't know, in fairness to Dinco Silanik, he was actually involved, narinig ko lang, uh, sa mga projects at Tyndale Park Community School. But in terms of knowing what he really contributed as a school trustee, yun talagang contribution yun na talagang, uh, on the record, ay, I really don't know. Because yun nga ang problema, hindi natin alam eh. Hindi natin nararamdaman. Or siguro, hindi rin tayo interesado. Maybe it's, it's, it's on us. Sabi ko nga, maybe it's my ignorance because I was too busy, I have two jobs, and I don't have the time to hear about what's happening. Siguro, on, on both parts, in fairness naman, siguro, may kasalanan din tayo as parents, diba?
Hindi natin pinapansin eh.
Oo, hindi natin pinapansin hanggang sa magkaroon ng ganitong problema. Kasi reactionary kadalasan 'yung, 'yung ating mga, uh, ano eh, mga attitudes. Pagka nagkaroon ng problema, tsaka tayo magre-react. However, eh, talagang hindi ko maubos, hindi ko talaga mai, ano eh, mai, kung ako abugado, eh, hindi naman ako lawyer, kung ako abugado ng, ng school trustee, hindi ko, ano eh, kukunin ako abugado, hindi kukunin eh. Ang hirap eh manalo.
Hirap manalo.
Ang hirap eh manalo dahil, kung talagang, ano eh, kung talagang nakikita mo 'yung dedication ng school trustee na every now and then, they are there to support you as a parent, as a school. Diba? Ipaglalaban mo sila, you are very willing to support them. And as a lawyer, you are very much willing to, to, ano, to, uh, to hold their case, to handle their case, even in pro bono, walang bayad. Kasi alam mo, na mananalo ka, there's a good chance of you winning the case because you know what are their contribution to the community. However, we do not know.
Mahiwagan tanong, we do not know.
Oo, ano na, ina-highland na ako. Kaya, 'yung mga magrar- rally, for those of you who are joining the rally on March thirty-first, I don't know, I'm not saying that you don't join the rally, however, know the issue first. I'm not pro-Palister ever. However, I'm not pro-NDP or pro-liberal. I am just, we are just, Tito Aldus and I were just telling the truth based from our experience. Diba?
But.
Before you join those.
If you have a different experience as well compared to us with Tito Noel, just voice out or share your story.
Oh, ganun lang yun. Wala tayong politikahan dito. Kasi magalit na kayo sa amin, magagalit kayo, dahil wala namang kami utang na los sa, sa loob sa inyo eh. Diba? We don't care if you, kung magalit kayo sa amin, kaya lang. Eh, ang kagandahan nga sa atin, we are not involved or affiliate to any political party, period. That's why we can tell anything we want. We are not puppets of any political parties. We are just plain, um, community activists doing this show to educate, to inform, and to engage all of us, including ourselves.
Ayun, si Kuya Noel.
And I rest my case.
I rest your case, ayun. Kay ka muna ng prutas, kung kailangan niyo ng prutas. Sige, sige, gawin mo na tayo dito, kay, kailangan niyo ng prutas, 'yung bago nating fruit stand, 'yung fruit, duse, basket, ink. Ayan sa mi Logan, kung, pantakin niyo na po si Rowena Breones.
Ayan sa Logan.
Oo, sa Logan, bagong ano, bago natin tinutulungan. Of course, Waiti Pinoy.
Isid ba ng Waiti Pinoy? Ay, hindi. Masikap na siya.
Antalya, Bake Rite Bakery. Kuya Noel, ang bago kay Bake Rite.
Ay, si Kuya Manny, bagong gupet. Hindi, pinakamasarap dyan. Pinakamasarap dyan si Opao. Tsaka minsan, meron silang ano dyan, 'yung litong manok.
Ayun na, o.
Tsaka litong belly, ay, the best.
Summer na, summer na, sabayan niyo ng Red Hot Dogs pagkailangan na sa camping, nandito sa backyard dinyo, kay nagba-barbecue. Ayan, Red Hot Dogs lang po 'yan, tapos sabayan niyo ng Kandian Water, na may barley.
Ano ba 'yung nasa tabi mo dyan, Tito Aldus? Ako, gitara itong nasa tabi ko eh.
Kandian machine to, Kandian machine, ito 'yung nagproduced ng alkaline water. Yung mga produkto natin, maraming features po ito. Ito 'yung mga produkto natin, maraming features po ito. Next episode, isa-isain po natin na 'yung features ng Kandian team, nagproproduce ng alkaline water. Ay, Kuya Noel, may ano pala, no, saseguee lang, no? 'Yung sa mga gustong mag-join po, nandito po 'yung number one na Kandian team dito sa Winnipeg or sa buong Manitoba.
Buong Manitoba, yeah.
Si Kuya Noel at si Kuya Aldos, hindi lang po kami nagbubuhat ng banko, pero sa amin namin 'yung totoo. Number one po tayo sa Kandian, kung gusto niyo interesado po kayo, 'yung numbers po dyan nag-i-scroll, plus may inform, may email po kami dyan, kung gusto niyo po mag-fire.
And we would like to thank, uh, yeah, Tito Aldos, we would like to thank Enagic Toronto for, uh, sending us that recognition, being the top sellers here in Manitoba. We will not boast about our rank po, pero alam niyo nga, ang pinakamataas na rank sa Kandian is six A. So, we would just receive a recognition from Enagic, uh, um, saying that we are, uh, top sellers in Manitoba, and we, and those are all, ano, fruits of hard work. Kaya lang, dumating po 'yung pandemic. However, pagka nag-open na po uli, we, we can do, uh, house, uh, demos. And if you want to be part of this, uh, number one team in Manitoba, as what Tito Aldos, uh, said, you can always send us a message, or call us, or send us an email.
Right?
Hmm.
Call it a night? Medyo na pa-
Ah, tumind- naulok ako brad.
Napasap 'yung ating discussion ngayon.
Ah, pero masarap. Thank you very much, teacher Malu, for, for your inputs, and maybe one time we can, uh, talk more about an education, especially on your sector. Kung ano 'yung particular na ginagawa mo, uh, let us share that to our community para matulungan po natin 'yung katulad nyo, 'yung mga naglala ng oras to improve our educational system and to improve our community dito sa Manitoba. Yun, ayos.
Two minutes lang, batil lang na po natin 'yung mga nag-engage sa atin. Uh, Janice Uson, uh, Malu, teacher Malu Hoswe. Rosalie Albincola nag-comment, si Anthony Ro- Anthony Ramos. Uh, Bernie Wox, Bonny Wox.
Oh, si Bonny, yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Hmm, Emmanuel Sapdu. Rowena Breones, Iriyu Yoshit, oh, may, taga-Japanese tayo, Ishida. Renato Atokoracha, Lordes de losario, Regina Koracha, marami-marami.
Shout out, shout out dun sa mag-asawa nga pala, dinilibiran ko kanina ng-
Ah, sila, Ati Regina?
Oo, Ati Regina, tsaka si Kuya Atok.
Ah, Renato, ayun.
Ayun, naayos na po tayo. And pasensya na po kayo, medyo nag-init ang ulo ko ngayon dahil, uh, ngayon lang humo po, dahil sa buong araw na pag-de-deliver.
Ay, anong gamit? 'Yung Kuyas Foods natin, ano?
Ah, Kuyas Foods. Uh, pero it's our, Aldos and I are not getting any money from this program. Uh, we are advocating again to educate, inform, and engage people on important issues that would help each and every one of us. So, kahit na, despite of our, uh, pagiging busy, our time, ginagawa po namin kahit once a week to reach out to you and to discuss things. Na may kabuluhan. I'm not saying na iubansyo, walang kabuluhan. But this one, we are very proud to say that every time we discuss, every time we go online, we discuss things that would benefit you and the future of Manitoba.
Well said, Kuya Noel.
Oo, so, yeah.
Bagay na yan?
Ang bagay na, ay, di, hindi tayo tabos-sapos eh. Marami po salamat sa inyong pakikinig. Pasensya na po kayo kung mag-ayaw niyo nag-iinit ang ulo namin. Pero ang layo namin po namin dito is to, uh, not on, not to entertain you, but again, to educate, inform, and engage all of us in important issues.
Yes, and we do ask you as well, being a Manitobaan, to engage yourself through Facebook platform and put your reactions. Di ba? Mas magandang nagre-react po kayo, ibig sabihin, naintindihan po ninyo 'yung issue. Ayun, tinabati po natin, si Peter Godoy, who's watching from Batangas.
Mayor ng Transcona.
Oh, hindi si, hindi si Peter Godoy, Taga- Taga Batangas to, Kuya Noel.
Oh, Taga Batangas, oo. Tapos 'yung OFW, baka natin makalimutan.
Ay, wala pa lang 'yung ating Taga Doha, Qatar, Lynn Morilla.
Lynn Morilla, yeah.
Magandang, magandang umaga dyan po, from OFW Doha, Qatar. Dalawang pa ata dyan, Kuya Noel, uh, dalawa pa.
Si Pines Ponsalan ng, ito, Taga Winnipeg din to, Pines Ponsalan. So, yeah, thank you very much again, and ang hirap magpaalam no, kasi masarap makapagkwento. Ah, masarap makapagkwento. We'll see you again next time. And, uh, before Saturday, we will, uh, show you our interview with RCMP, so that you would know, uh, certain precautions when we go hunt for Aurora Borealis para po safe tayo sa pag, uh, pagha-hunt, sa pagchi-chase ng Northern Lights. Although it's very good, it's a natural wonder, we all love it. However, isipin po lagi natin ang ating safety, lalo na 'yung mga anak o mga kasamaan natin, napo.
Nagpahabol, Kuya Noel. Nagpahabol.
Ay, napahabol.
From Peter Godoy, from Batangas. Hi, mga kuya, thanks sa time and concern ninyo sa aming mga ordinaryong people. Keep safe, always.
Ay, ordinary, ordinaryong tao lang din po kami eh, hindi mo na ma- hindi talaga ako ng ano, ng peaceball dito sa Canada. Ang ilang trabaho ko.
Idinala ako ng sa bawal-baw.
Peaceball, tsaka ng cake siyang dito. So, huwag niyong ano, pare-pareho tayong ordinary dito, ordinaryong tao, walang special, ano, walang special dito. We are all one, antay-antay lang po tayo. And in that note, marami po salamat, this is Kuya Noel.
Lagyan ko nga ng background music, nag-iba, this is Tito Aldos and Kuya Noel Show, you're watching it.
Marami po salamat, we'll see you again next week.
Alright, bye po.
Bye.